Thank you for joining. I'm Angus Robertson. I look after marketing here at Connectwise. We also have David Rasapor, who's our Chief Product and Technology Officer, Jeff Bishop, who leads Product Management for PSA RMM, including Screen Connect. We have Kieran, who heads our Screen Connect business, Patrick Beggs, our CISO, Jason Ferguson on our InfoSec team, and we also have Joseph Lombardo, who's a Director within our support organization. So for today, during this call, we'll provide an update on why we're in this situation, also provide an update on what we've done so far with regard to the product, and then we'll open it up for Q and A. So for Q and A, we will be answering questions in the chat, but we'll also be asking and selecting questions that we see, folks asking and answering them verbally. Also, after the call, our support team will follow up with anybody who's asked a question to make sure that we're closing the loop there. But with that, I will hand it over to you, David, to talk about where we are and why we ended up in this situation.
Thanks Angus. As Angus mentioned, my name is David Rasapor. I'm the Chief Technology and Product Officer for Connectwise. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on what happened, especially with two certificate revocations. What was the core issue and what we've done to address it? The first issue that came up was, which caused a certificate revocation, had to do with the original installer, where we have the ability to use the buffer area in our agent download to really provide configuration information. This was done for the purpose of customizing the installer itself. That buffer area could be used and altered in order to propagate potentially malicious downloads or malicious files as a part of the installer. When we were notified of that the first time, we took action to move that configuration information out of that buffer area, which triggered the second finding and the second revocation. While that change and customization was moved out of the buffer area, it still provided a file as part of the installer that still contained configuration items. That was also flagged, and we had taken some, put some safeguards in place where if the MSI was altered, it would provide a notification that the file was altered. However, it is possible to actually unpack that MSI, change that file, and still could potentially lead to misuse of the installer and the propagation of potentially malicious files to be put on the target machine as part of the install. That was the second report that came in and caused another certificate revocation. With those two reports, we had to take the necessary steps to cauterize and eliminate any possibility of the installer being manipulated at runtime. That meant removing configuration options as part of the install process. Another issue that was brought up was the fact that we used a common certificate to sign all the installers, which were then being modified before being pushed out to end customers. And one of the issues that was brought up by our cert authority and by Microsoft is that is not a great security practice. They wanted to see individually signed installers being pushed out to customers, which led us down the path of requiring each partner to sign the install themselves. That is where we ended up as part of the recommendation and best practices in security. So what have we done to date? We have removed all the relevant customization from the client for both the on-premise and the cloud version of the product. We've removed many of the web customizations that could be used for branding, such as background images and logos. This means that we require all on-premise partners to perform their own code signing of this client. We've modified the on-premise install to collect and pull back additional information for us upon the install. To do so, we've removed certain features from trials to prevent misuse. We've rebuilt a tool to help partners implement their own code signing certificates, and we are currently working on implementing tools to make it very difficult for malicious actors to decompile or manipulate our on-premise installer. These are the steps that we have taken. We have some future work that we are still working on. That is to look at safe and effective ways to bring back some customization capabilities as part of the installer. But since that work is not complete, we are not ready to share how that is done. We will reach out to our partners and share that information as part of the ongoing efforts to continue to beef up our security, beef up product security, and to ensure that your customers, our joint customers, are protected as part of the deployment of the Screen Connect installer. I'm going to pause there.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it. Jeff, anything to add in terms of the updates that we've made so far or how that rollout process is happening, both for on-premise and cloud? And just again, to make the distinction that, you know, installer and the personalization or customization changes have been made for both on-premise and cloud versions of Screen Connect, but in terms of the certificate requisition by partners, that's only for on-premise. But Jeff, anything else to add in terms of the progress?
Yeah, look, we hate that this is happening at this time with this sort of a time duration to get it all done. As David alluded to and very specifically mentioned, the research and the feedback that we're getting from security experts around the world is that these are the changes that you need to make, and we need to put in additional safeguards to make sure that malicious users cannot continue to consume our product in ways that we didn't intend it to be used. A few things that I expect will come up as questions, right? Is, you know, signing the code. There's probably a bit of a misconception there in that what we're asking everybody to sign is the agents, right? We're signing the code that sits at the server level. It's the agents that are going out that you have the ability to see, manipulate, change, that we're actually asking to be signed. You would sign those, that EXE and MSI files, and that way when they go out, they'll come from you, the IT professional, and it'll go out to your customers, and that's what would be represented onto the screen if they were to go click on it and look at the cosigning of that agent. So it's not actual code, but it is the agent. We are going to look at adding some of the customizations back in. We just need to do so in a sort of a controlled fashion, and we just couldn't do that in the sort of the timeline that we have here to get this all out and done before the 7th. In terms of updates in what we're doing, the on-prem build is out and available, so you can go get that and put that in place, get your cosign certificate. We have talked to several different cosigning companies, as well as we've updated our extension inside of the build to allow you to get your certificate, put it into a key store, apply it. And most of the digital certificate companies, the CAs, are saying that they can turn this around in about 24 to 36 hours for companies, that we've provided instructions. I think Angus, we're posting those online as well as sending them out, but of how that works for some of the different providers that are out there. From a cloud perspective, we wanted to have this town hall, and we wanted to get the emails out about the customizations. But the teams will start going through our Automate cloud first, and then go to the Screen Connect cloud, and then provide all those updates. We are continuing to look at the Automate on-prem to see what additional work or ways that we can try to help that community. That gets us through, you know, the bulk of the different Screen Connect and Automate and RMM installs. So for RMM as well, that's all tied to Screen Connect cloud. We'll start rolling out those updates later this afternoon. I think that hits most of the things that we're seeing. I'm sure there's lots and lots of questions that we'll try to get to here, as well as in writing back after this.
Thank you, Jeff. Yep, let's go ahead and move to Q and A. We do have plenty of questions here. And again, we'll do what we can to answer as many of these verbally. In parallel, we are answering many of these one-on-one in the chat. And then afterwards, Joe and the support team will follow up with any that we didn't answer and make sure that we close the loop with you. So first, losing our branding is problematic. Will this ever be an option again in the future?
Yes, David said it first, right? Is that we want to try to bring back some branding and customizations available. We just need to make sure we can do so in a secure way. We can't have companies out there misrepresenting who they are to the public without providing the level of visibility and transparency to those customers who are connecting to those remote support sessions or downloading those access agents. So we have plans on how to solve that. We just need days or, you know, not months and weeks to try to get that back in place. We'll start inching those back in, and we'll do so based off of the feedback we get from the community. If there's something we cannot do, we'll be very transparent about that as well. We won't misrepresent that.
Are we expected to provide our own code-signed certificates temporarily until Connectwise can fix the main issues that caused the CA to revoke the certificate? Or is it going to be the new normal?
I mentioned that briefly, but I will answer that again. One of the recommendations is not to have a common signed certificate for all the variations of the installer. So it is the new normal for the on-premise installer to be signed by you guys and not with a central common certificate by us. That is the new norm going forward for on-premise.
What are the downsides to using a self-signed cert?
We would not recommend self-signed certs. As I'm sure you're aware, OS and browsers will warn you about self-signed certs, that they are not secure, they can be impersonated, and that is why the OS and the browsers warn you about that. We highly, highly recommend getting a certificate from a proper certificate authority that is recognized by the likes of Microsoft and to use that certificate. Self-signed certs are great for testing, but not for production and customer shared code.
I probably would jump on that one, Angus, to add on. Probably most everybody here is thinking, this is an unreasonable timeframe to go get that cert. I mentioned that I think a lot of cert companies can turn that around for you pretty quickly, but certain regions of the world are, that may be more difficult. So we are making the Screen Connect cloud available. So for partners that, you know, want to get that cert, but they need a few more days, we can direct you to the cloud, get a trial, start utilizing that. If there's any issues with that, we'll start to work on trying to help and make that, you know, a viable solution for you while you're waiting on getting your cert available.
What happens if, say, in two months, a new issue is found? Do we have to disclose it to our CA and validate our code sign and then restart?
If an issue was found with our application, we would handle that because we're the ones signing that. If it was on the agent side, I think we've made all those modifications and changes, so it would probably get flagged mostly because of some sort of a customization made with the EXE or the MSI of the download from the agent perspective. So, but if a CA did flag your certificate, then yes, you'd have to go get a new one and replace, and then react to whatever it is that they said. Could that be our fault? Possibly. I wouldn't, you know, say that that wouldn't be a possibility in there. So if that was the case, then we would look at what we're doing to try to help our partners in the future. But I think that that's a, as long as we stay within the realms of what the CAs are telling us to do from a code signing, and that you're very careful with your customers and you're not a malicious actor, you're probably going to be fine.
I'm going to add a little bit more context to that, Jeff, if you don't mind.
Please, always.
Generally, certificates get revoked if someone believes or has evidence that your particular certificate was used or could be used in a malicious attack. So that would mean somebody figured out a way to get your installer that you signed and was using that to distribute malware or was used by a threat actor. Anything that is related to the actual agent itself is not signed, is not yours to fix. So a certificate authority would not go out and yank thousands of certificates because they found an issue with Connectwise. That is not the certificate itself being used, and therefore, it is highly unlikely that that would happen, unless, as I mentioned, something about the installer package that you signed was specifically flagged, and that is the reason that they would revoke your cert. It is highly unlikely, and that is not what happened here. And that is why our certificate was revoked, was because we used one certificate to sign thousands of packages that were being distributed by thousands of partners, and any one of them being misused would be tied back to that certificate.
Thank you, David.
Great addition.
Will other cloud HSM providers, such as Google HSM and AWS Cloud HSM, be added? Currently, only Azure Vault HSM is supported.
Any HSM, you know, could be used, but we're asking to put those inside of the Azure Key Store currently because that's how our extension has been set up to facilitate the signing. There's probably tons of companies out there that know how to do this themselves without our extension and could do this with any cert they would like. For those that do not, that's why we updated our extension, and you put the cert into the Azure Key Store, and then our extension would be able to support that. We will extend the extension to be able to support other things in the future. It's just, again, time. That was the fastest way we could do it because that is the methodology that we use internally for the ways that we store certificates. Which, and it's also a very low cost, very easy, and very secure path of doing this.
All right, Jeff, we have a question about Automate. Does the Screen Connect on-prem certificate changes where we need to get code signing done affect on-prem Connectwise? Automate customers using the version, using this version of Screen Connect that is included with Automate? Or is this only for someone who is using just Screen Connect on-prem independently? I have a customer that is just using Screen Connect, and they got the email of this issue, but we use Screen Connect as part of Automate, and we haven't seen a notification.
So I do believe that, well, first, if it's any on-prem installation that is impacted, that needs the cosigning. I did mention that we are trying to look at the Automate on-prem to see if there's ways, because of our mechanisms and us, you know, owning the relationship between Screen Connect and Automate there, if there's anything that we can do to speed this up or make this easier, but that is still TBD. It's just something we're looking at. Right now, all partners who have an on-prem installation should be looking at the cosign certificate to update. Yes, I think I got all that answered. It was a, there might have been a second question in there somewhere, but I missed, Angus.
Okay. How does this affect remote workforce and other extensions like Screen Connector? This is for you, Jeff.
Remote workforce or Screen Connector? I don't think it would impact that. It's, you just still are going out and signing the agent that goes out. So I don't foresee any issues with any of those sort of extensions or plugins into the Screen Connect application. We've got that captured in here. We will review that with engineering team and product managers to make sure that that's the correct answer, but I believe it is.
When are we going to be able to have clients download it and executable again? The zip file download is tough when dealing with a lot of clients, Jeff.
So that is.
I can take that, Jeff.
Go ahead, Kieran.
That was part of the latest release that we're rolling out. So for everyone who's on-premise, it's the release 25.4.2.5 that's currently available in the downloads page. That has the fixes for the file zip, so it goes back to the one-click experience.
Thank you, Kieran. How is the builder ensuring the file delivery to our client is safe and not replaced by something else and then applied our code to sign it? Jeff?
So in order for that to happen, and they make a modification to that installer, they would have to have your certificate to re-sign it. Any attempt to alter the installer package would result in an error message being displayed at the time of install. So again, that would mean that they would have to compromise your environment and get your certificate, and then use that certificate to re-sign a package. And that is, again, a very unlikely scenario. But in the case that it does happen, yes, your certificate has been compromised.
Well, and your installation of Screen Connect as well in your environment. So it's your double in that one from a pain point.
It was one of the changes we made in the first iteration, which is to provide notification if the MSI has been tampered with.
Kieran, I installed 25.4.25.9314, but the version check page in the administration shows that I'm running outdated 25.4.25.9313. Is this a known issue?
It's not a known issue, so we'll take that away. It should be the latest version that's there that has been tested to download. The other thing I will say as well, I missed, just because I could see some of the questions coming in. So we will be publishing documentation for every step of this process, from obviously the download of the vision through the steps to go and get a certificate and then to install the certificate on our extension. So all of that is going to be documented. I will take the questionnaire away and just confirm that we haven't got any known issues with our latest version.
Thank you. Jeff, how will these changes affect unattended access?
It still just goes back to the agent signing, right? Once the agent is signed and redeployed, you shouldn't see any major modifications to the functionality of the agent or the product. We go back again to the customizations that I would call out. If you had included your own icon that went down some of the task tray, you had the ability to add links to the task tray. These are customizations that we've removed because those are areas that could have been manipulated by a malicious actor, and we've got to make sure that when we put any of those sort of controls back in, that we protect the end user from something being installed on their machine that they didn't intend to be. So, but once it's signed, there shouldn't be any functional issues with it.
David, will we release the source code for the agent?
No, we will not.
Jeff, can we get clarification on the cert that partners should be, the type that partners should be looking to acquire, OV or EV?
Okay, so the, I don't even think you could, if you have an exportable, which is like the EV status, like if you have one of those today, it will work. But the new modern path where everything is going is down like the HSM certs with the organizational activation. So you're going to see it probably listed as like an HSM, and then you'll see requests for like, are we validating you as an individual and organization? Organization is probably the easiest path. They're going to then want to validate your phone number on your website, call you, make sure that you're there, that you are who you say you are, and that's how they're doing that validation. But the HSMs is kind of the new standard that went in place, I'll say, two years ago-ish. But you, some people could have bought an EV cert that was, you know, had, say, three years on it, so they may have an extra year left before they would have to go to HSM. David, did I miss anything there technically?
You got it.
So the short answer is OV. "In the mail you sent us, we're using on-prem Screen Connect today. You directly advised to use Azure Certificate using code signing certificate. What I understand from this town hall is that we can't use the install a custom certificate or install a customer certificate solution, correct? As we soon upgrade to the latest version, we're currently on 9293. Will the current clients keep working until the 7th with the custom layout?" Jeff or Kieran?
Everything will continue working until the 7th, and then once the code signing is revoked, the cert certificate is revoked, then just like what we've mentioned in the past, you'll probably see your EDRs, your AVs, or potentially an operating system kind of popping up or trying to flag or quarantine those files, those agents, because they're not signed. At the point you update into the new version and then redeploy the agent outbound to those, you'll start, that's when you'll see the customizations change.
Thank you. Kieran, will the upgrade to the latest version of Connectwise Control? It's Connectwise Screen Connect. Effect currently install clients in any way?
You're going to have to re-sign him to Jeff's point from a sit perspective. So what will basically happen is you will download the latest version, and what you will have to do is obviously get a certificate from any certificate provider of your choosing. You then deploy that into the extension that we've got. You'll see a sign-in extension, and then you will have to update the agents. Obviously, when those agents get updated, it will see that they've obviously got a self-signed certificate past the 7th of July, which is the deadline, and those agents will not be impacted. If you don't do that, obviously, you are not updating the certificate, which means that past the 7th, it will become entrusted.
Yeah, in our experience there, maybe Joseph, you can speak to this, is if the agent doesn't have a signed certificate, it is generally still able to communicate to the server and get the update. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's been our experience so far.
Thank you. David, how are we able to sign for cloud agents but not the on-prem?
Angus, I can take this one.
Yeah, I'll let.
I know they spoke a lot, so the fundamental difference in kind of what we're saying at the start is the issue we have on-premise is the fact that there's a blanket, or there was a blanket certificate being used, which meant that as soon as somebody was alerted to potential misuse, we have very few options other than contacting the service provider to get that environment taken down and removed. The difference obviously is in the cloud is as soon as we're alerted to misuse of an incident, because we're hosting it, we can destroy it straight away and take it offline. So that's the fundamental issue between why it's different for cloud and why we're able to sign it, because we've got immediate ability to remove it in case.
Thanks, Kieran.
The other, the other technical aspect of that is that all of the environments are hosted, or the instances of Screen Connect are hosted in our environment. Therefore, we have full control of the files, the services, the signing, everything else. So we know by, since we have removed the customizations at this time, we know exactly what is in those files. Therefore, we can sign them with full confidence that there's nothing going down that would be malicious. So that's, if Kieran gave one half of the answer, I gave the other half, depending on what the actual intent was of the question, but I think that covers it.
And I'll answer this one. "Will it be a simple step-by-step process for someone who has not worked with certifications? Yes, we have a university page. We'll send out, that was part of the email, that link to that page with the step-by-step instructions, and we'll make sure to include the link in the follow-up email to everybody who registered or attended to this town hall. Do we have a list of preferred or recommended CAs? We don't recommend any particular CA, but we did provide a list of CAs as part of that university page, so you can look. I think there's six or seven there that we listed. A question for you, Jeff. I'm a smaller shop. How fast can we do a cloud conversion if the decision is made today?
Immediately. So we are trying to make sure we support any of our partners, like our Automate on-prem, who want to come into the cloud and use that. So we'll, but you can immediately just go start a trial, go get your agents deployed, start consuming it. We'll probably send out a communication to try to help us validate which trials are who. And the team, you know, Keith Baker and Kieran and others are working on, you know, kind of cleaning up that process. But you could easily move into it today and start using it, and then we'll help you migrate to it fully.
Thanks, Jeff. "If we're out of maintenance and updated to version 24.2 from two weeks ago, are there any plan to make a new build available for us?" Jeff?
We're going to keep all these customization changes at that .4 and forward. We had to, to get this in place, we had to do a lot of behind-the-scenes manipulation to get the .4 ready. Getting the .2 or .3 would just not be attainable. We are working, Kieran and Bannerman and some of the Screen Connect team, to support the .2, .3, the people that recently updated, to get them into .4. For anybody who, because we have quite a few partners that are on 2022 and 2023 builds, we are going to make some availability for you to move up. There will probably be some cost of that as you kind of move into it, but we'll work on that with everybody else. But those that have recently updated that 2022, 2023, or sorry, the .2, .3s, we're going to give you the ability to move into the .4.
I have a question. I can answer, then, David, one for you. So we answered this earlier, but will our on-premise instance stop working? In other words, will agents already deployed be flagged by EDR or stop working on Monday? This should only impact new agents deployed, question mark? So our experience is, for the most part, EDRs have. So our experience is, for the most part, EDRs have not flagged agents to such an extent that they weren't able to communicate back and get the update. So for the most case, it should still work. I don't have extra money to shell certificates. Can I just whitelist the Screen Connect? Just jumped on me. Where did it go?
I know where that's going, Angus. It's tied into the last one, so...
Yeah, David said he could answer this one. Can I just whitelist the Screen Connect directory? My AV product was the actual risk of an unsigned app.
Yeah, this is one of those where people jumping to answer this one. It is generally considered very dangerous practice to whitelist an unsigned application. There is no authenticity check, there is no origin check. It becomes a gaping hole, a security hole in the organization. We do not recommend that practice.
Thanks, David. Jeff, can we use on-prem Automate with Cloud Screen Connect?
Yes, yes, you can. There's actually quite a few people that already do that today. I know some of our team are working on updating the instructions on how to configure and set that up, but it is possible.
As it will take one to seven days to get a new cert, our experience is that it's 24 to 48 hours. Maybe it's different for you, but the question is, should we wait to upgrade our Screen Connect instance? Is there any functionality issues that will happen if we upgrade but don't have the new cert yet? In other words, should we wait to upgrade until after we have the cert?
If you're on-prem, if you run the installation, it's going to be unsigned, all right? So that's going to be your problem. So I would get the cert and get it ready to go, then you do the installation, and when you finish installation, you do the signing, and then you would redeploy the agents.
Got it. Well, thank you for everybody for attending. Again, as I said, we'll make sure to follow up with any questions we haven't answered, either one-on-one or verbally. David or Jeff, anything else you want to say before we wrap up here?
Yeah, I'll say, from some of these questions, we certainly acknowledge and understand some of the frustration that we're seeing in these questions. This was unintended consequences of building features for customization and personalization, which threat actors and malicious actors used as potentially a way to distribute dangerous spots. It was not something that we wanted to do either. However, for the purposes of protecting you ourselves and your customers, we had to take these necessary steps in order to protect all involved. Those features turned out to be things that could be used for dangerous purposes. That's why we had to remove the customization features. And as Jeff, Angus, and I said earlier, we're going to continue to work on what we can reintroduce safely, but given the very compressed timeframe, the only option was to close the door to attackers and then go back and safely add capabilities as we had time.
Thank you, David, and thanks, everybody, for attending. Shortly, we'll be sending out updates with regard to on-prem Screen Connect and Automate on-prem. We've been looking at a number of options there, so we'll share those updates. And again, we'll make sure to follow up with any questions we didn't answer. And as we have more updates or more communications, we'll continue to update the university page and the FAQ with the guidance, and also, if needed, schedule another town hall, but appreciate the time today, and we'll come back as we have more information. Thank you.